Good evening, folks, and welcome to the regular Select Board meeting. Uh, this is our meeting of January third, our first meeting in the new year 2023. We're going to start off this meeting with an executive session. We've invited our town attorney uh to the meeting. So I'll dispense with the usual opening of the meeting and we'll conduct that at six o'clock or thereabouts. Um, and the reason for the executive session uh would be obviously discussions with our town attorney on a number of issues under one VSA three thirteen where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. We're going to be discussing uh the days in uh pending or probable civil litigation to which the town may be a party. Uh, we're going to be discussing the fire police station construction contract. And we're going to be discussing a personnel matter uh that involves employment after retirement or employment of a public officer and possible contracts uh revolving around that as well.
Um, I would move that we go into executive session for those purposes. I would broaden the last one to talk about general operation of a department following um the retirement and not any one particular person.
No, I didn't intend it to be that, but that's fine.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to go into executive sessions. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, it's a vote and we are now in executive session. We will resume uh as soon as we finish or at six o'clock. Welcome back, folks, and I apologize for the delay. Our session with our town attorney went a little longer than normal and we will start the regular meeting as we usually do with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me.
Why would they just do the flag in United States of America and do the reward for which it stands? One nation under God, in the world, that we bring justice for all.
Thank you and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you. First order of business will be the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. That would be December twentieth. Which is made and seconded to approve. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions, or changes? I have one. Bill, I don't know whether you forgot or you just ran out of ink. I asked you to put the my response to the motion to the uh the my decision to rule that out of order. And the reason that I gave, I wanted I wanted that delineated. I think I think that's as important as the complaint. So when a complaint is made or a ruling is made and it's opposed, the chairman is opposed uh and the chairman gives a reason why he made the motion. I think that's as important to be in there as the complainants. So I would like that as part of the minutes because it was definitely a in my opinion, was as an important part of the that discussion.
So.
So I would approve it with those changes.
Well, I would like to see what actually is written because I thought it fairly reflected the discussion.
And I don't.
So I will move to table the minutes until we actually see what the proposed amendment is.
You want to print the amendment up, Bill? For the next meeting.
I I can. I I can. Yes, that's good. This this these next couple of weeks are my time is going to be very busy. So that's going to take a lot of time to do that.
I didn't make this motion. Mary made the motion. So, you know, we can't approve. We can't approve her. We can't approve her motion unless you're willing to do the amendment.
I have no idea what the amendment is, so I would like to see it before I approve it as part of the minutes.
You want your answer verbatim included in the minutes.
That's correct.
Was it one that was said at the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it's the follow up to the motion.
As you recall, Mary, when you made your
Well, let's let Bill just
Right.
dig it out and we'll hold. I mean, my suggestion is we hold on the minutes until we get that.
In the past, I don't typically include the conversation verbatim just because it's 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 ultimately doesn't if it doesn't affect the vote, it doesn't it doesn't affect the vote. So it doesn't go in there. It's not usually what the minutes are for. So that's why it's not there. And it does take a lot of time to to do that. So that that's why it's not there. But um I I can, but it would just be just yeah, okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Good. Let's proceed with announcements. Any board members have announcements?
Just a reminder that the circle, the next edition of the circle articles are due February first. And if anybody's running for office, this would be the time to get an article in to state your positions and so on. Thank you.
Good. Thanks for that warning. That's I didn't realize it was February.
February first.
Any other announcements? Sharon, you good? Is Joe on?
No.
No. Okay, good. All right, we go to hearing no more announcements. Um, questions from the floor, public comments, anyone who is not on the agenda? Fred?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm here as the town tree warden. And a couple of weeks ago, Dave and I got together and walked the town forest where the multi-use path is going to come down through. And he mentioned that uh Green Mountain Power wanted to do some clearing along the penstock and that he had given them my contact information. So I waited to hear from them and didn't hear. Today I was in the town office, spoke with Bill, got their contact information and gave them a call. And um it turns out they're already up there working.
Hmm.
Um, it brings several issues to my mind. Uh, one, the town is probably not covered in their insurance and should be. Uh, nobody consulted with Act two fifty. The town forest is under Act two fifty in part. I don't know in in total. Uh, but we should have, somebody should have at least topped Act two fifty. And um, of course, they're cutting down trees with no remuneration or anything like that and no input from the town tree warden. Um, I did do a quick and dirty tally of the area where they want to cut and uh came up with a a figure of uh Yeah, I didn't add. I didn't total them up. Let me see. One, two, little over a little over a thousand four feet of timber involved. Um, with a value of, I did come up with a value uh of of just shy of six hundred dollars and that's stumpage value. That's the value of the tree on the stump is published by uh the most recent stumpage value is published by the State of Vermont Department of Forest and Parks. Um, and in the data that they collect statewide. Um, so um I did talk with the Don Teraholt from Green Mountain and uh he apologized and said, what do we got to do? And I said, well, first I have to get some direction from the board. This isn't a hazard tree on the side of the road where I feel very comfortable just taking care of the hazard. This is a lot more than that. And uh, so that is why I'm here. Um, I did speak with the um, a mill owner here in town who said that he would, if the price was reasonable, to take the timber and to be sawed into boards. Uh, there's a couple of cords of firewood, small hardwood stems that are getting cut. And he thought that he could find somebody in town that would could use the wood. Uh, we don't burn wood in the town barn, so that's not an option. Um, and uh uh, there was at least one monumented tree out toward the edge of the road that is part of the survey boundary line. And unfortunately, they had already cut that tree. And so I told the I told the fellow from Green Mountain, Don, that they would have to put up a new monument to designate to delineate the the line between the town forest and the neighbor's property, who just happened to be Don's son. So.
Hmm. Okay.
So I'm looking, I'm looking for input.
Well, uh, a number of questions. Did they cut all the trees that they
Not yet.
What what is the reason for cutting? Were they danger trees or not?
No, they're they're not. They're perfectly healthy. They're trees that I specifically reserved from cutting five years ago when we had the timber sale up there. Uh, there's a couple of really nice red oak, which are great mass producers for the wildlife. Um, there were some young, healthy pine coming that that just wasn't anywhere near financially uh mature enough to even think about putting in.
Can you describe like where where the trees are on the
Just as you, just as you turn off a sandboard road and enter the right of way, um, you you you're actually on Don's son's property at that point in time. Uh, within maybe a hundred feet, you cross a red blaze line onto town property and actually from Sandborne Road all the way to beyond the gate, they want to clear everything between the penstock and the road, the right of way road to facilitate replacing the penstock. It's easier to swing those twenty foot sections of six foot pipe around with a crane if there isn't a hundred foot tree in the way. So it's that's that's all it is. It's just to facilitate their replacing the penstock.
They have the right to cut these trees?
If we say no, they don't. No, they're not their trees. They have a sixty foot right away.
That's the problem.
Thirty feet either side of the center of the penstock. And that's that's cleared now. In fact, it's cleared more than that.
Okay, I'd like to hear what the board has to say. Any board members?
Well, we've been pretty careful about complying with Act two fifty. So the first question is, do we we should be in touch with the district coordinator and make sure that we don't need to file for an amendment for tree cutting purposes?
I can do that first thing in the morning.
That would be one thing. Secondly, we should have something in writing from uh GMP. I mean, we're you know, other places in town, we're working on projects with them. Remember when we wanted to use their used telephone poles, we had to sign something with them to accept liability. So um, let's get something in writing, the the basics, uh along with the sketch map. So we know the area affected that they're going to cut trees in. And then we'll also have something if we need to go to Act two fifty with more. We've got something more. Um, but that should include a request for or, you know, before you do any work, we've got to have certificates of insurance from the contractors and from GMP to make sure that we're covered. I mean, this is pretty basic stuff. It's just a step that got skipped. And my understanding is, oh, and replacing the monument should be one of those things too. Um, some of the property where trees are being cut is the school's property and not ours.
West of Sandborne, they'll be on the town school lot.
Okay.
And I've spoken with nobody from the school board yet.
Okay, well, they also need to be in on this.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we got a few things to do before Green Mountain Power can proceed. We want to be good neighbors, but good agreements make good neighbors. It used to be good fences, but we'll go with good agreements.
Uh, the They're cutting a thousand board feet, you said? Or they have cut?
No, they they have not cut that. But that that is that is within the bound the 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 orange flagging of the area that they want to cut. It uh um.
I'd guess get a certificate of insurance from them and let them cut the trees. It's not gonna, you're not talking, I mean, you're talking a dump truck load of wood. A thousand board feet is
No, it's it's a it's eight, twelve, thirteen, twenty-three, but but that twenty-one, twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, so you're not even talking half a log truckload.
No, no, it's not a lot of wood. That's
No.
not the the
I I would, I wouldn't worry about Act two fifty, honestly, for what it is.
Their usual and what is their usual and customary way of disposing of the wood when they cut it?
They were going to leave it lying on the ground.
Yeah.
So they're going to leave it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just wind rolled, wind rolled on the edge of the the right of way and and let it rot down or
Is it appropriate for them to pay us for the trees that they cut down?
That's what the town desires.
It's it's not working.
Like I said, I did speak with a mill owner here in town who was willing to pay a a reasonable price for the for the material.
Are there trees that are already cut?
Well, for the trees that are cut and the trees that they want to cut.
Okay. What do you guys think?
I don't know. It's up to the board.
Well, I had something on on how we do that. And when, once we know what once we agree that they can cut the trees, we haven't, we're not quite there yet because this is outside the right of way. So we don't have to agree. I do think we need to check with two fifty. It's just that there's a blanket permit up there and I don't want to run afoul of them because we have so many other little things going on up there. But as for the the things that are cut, the firewood, the the board feet of oak and whatever else, um, we can just put a article out on our website and say, you know, informally, give us bids if you're interested. And then if we have people interested, we'll take the best bidder to get the stuff out of there. That's how I would deal with it. So it's even handed. So we're not directing it to somebody in particular.
Man, there's a lot of trees.
But they want to make a motion?
Um, I would move that we direct the tree warden to A, check with Act two fifty concerning whether a permit would be required. Um, B, draft up a or get a proposed agreement about this tree cutting, including a sketch plan, a replacement of the monument and certificate of insurance requirements, and then have them also be in touch with the school board for permission. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. You've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor is going to by by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
You do remember, Mary, this is a voluntary position.
Thank you for your many hours of pro bono work that you have and are about to put into this.
All right, I'll uh get as much of that done as I can tomorrow and we'll go from there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else that's not on the agenda that would like to address the board? Either here or uh on the Zoom call. Hearing none, we'll go to the department head reports and the first up is Mike Rowe, who is walking quite nicely.
Thanks. Um, I really don't have much to talk into you all. Uh, basketball's in full swing starting this week. So Bill has a schedule on the website. If you want to check out a game, the little kids would love you to be there. We usually play on home on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Ice skating rink, we're still kind of working on that. The weather's kind of played a little havoc and we got a slow start. And I wasn't able to do a lot of it as well. So we're hoping to uh get something going there. Other than that, that's kind of where we're at. It's winter. So you know, get out and enjoy the parks. Just make sure you're cleaning up after your dogs. Snow doesn't cover everything. So please, please use a bag, put in the trash cans, take it home with you. Um, don't just leave it on the side of the road. That's all I got.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike. Happy New Year to you. Next report will be from Chris Clark, our town fire chief. Evening, Chris.
Good evening, everybody.
Everybody.
Hi, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
Hi. Uh, not much tonight either. Um, we did participate in the Casella Parade. We put two trucks in it last Tuesday. Um, we had probably six volunteers take the two trucks. So that was kind of a big hit for everybody. And let's see here. We total up our calls for the year twenty twenty-two. We had a hundred and eighty-nine calls for the year, which is what five less than last year. So getting better. But other than that, I really have nothing to report.
The uh trucks were unbelievably well decorated for the parade. Kudos to the ladies and gentlemen that decorated them. I don't know if you want to mention them by name, but it it was pretty awesome, really.
Yeah, they spent, they spent a lot of time on it and uh they did do a great job. I will pass that on for you.
I wish you would. I think I think that truck definitely won the best decorated truck of the parade, at least the ones I saw. Good. Well, any questions or comments from board members for Chris? Happy New Year, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks. You too.
Chris.
Dave Sears, our road commissioner. Evening, Dave.
Evening. Happy New Years, everybody.
Same to you and thank you.
Well, we'll just kind of stick with the program. Not really much to report.
Thank you.
Uh,
Me too.
Storms, storms, and more storms. Um, the first one I believe was right after this the the board meeting uh weekend storm. That was a lot of fun. Um, but we got it. Everybody worked together. It all, it all kind of came together. Then the one uh Christmas Eve was uh started off with a lot of wind on a lot of trees and we got some trees we got to chip in, clean up. Um, some couple of pretty big ones came down. We just kind of shoved them out of the road with a loader, but back and get those cleaned up here in the next week or so. And then it turned to snow. And I plowed a lot of snow in my life. And I have never plowed in snow that came down that hard. You couldn't see to drive. It was pretty wild for a while. It sure was. And when it first started, it was hard. Uh, so we just ran around in circles and kept the main roads open and checked out about eleven o'clock and came back in at five and cleaned everything up and went home and had Christmas. So uh that all went pretty well. Um, we are working on uh we got like six thousand gallons of that mag chloride. So I'm trying to figure out how to dispense that in like a pre-treat operation, try to get it on the road before it snows. And that's kind of tricky because the weather, the temperatures have to be working in your favor and the whole thing. We're trying to retrofit to Western Star, which already has a tank on it and a pump and the whole thing. So uh we're just changing some stuff around on that. So we've kind of been working on that a little bit in our spare time and uh we actually started working on the multi-use path again today. So for shared use, I guess. Um, so we're just chipping away. Got some decent weather coming up here in the next few days. So kind of keep working on the shared use path and get ready for whatever lies ahead.
Yeah, we kind of got lucky, kind of got lucky because the rain kind of took all of the wind road snow right, right away. So we're starting from scratch again.
Yep.
Which is good.
Yep.
We just approved several payments for Cargill for salt. Is that, do we all have all of our salt in now?
We are full again.
Okay.
Um, just a ballpark. We, between the two storms, we used just over two hundred ton, which I didn't think was very bad at all. So because Cargill, for whatever reason, isn't sending us the invoices when we get the salt. That's why there's so many bills. They sent me a thing saying that we owed, we had one bill. It was like thirty days over, but we never actually got the bill.
Right.
So that's why there's so many of those in the packet. But but we are, we're all up and we're ready to rock.
Good. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dave? Good.
Thanks, Dave.
Carrie Clark, our town clerk and treasurer. Good evening, Carrie.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Okay, just some reminders, actually. I've got it over here.
That's a very small piece of paper.
It is. But some big reminders. Uh, next Tuesday is the second installment for our taxes. All the reminders are posted in all the usual places. So this is my reminder for this um, this area. Uh, today I opened the new year for the dog registration. Um, that goes until April first. Of course, you can register any dog after April first, but um for this year, I just opened that. We did have a few people come in today. Um, if you're a new dog owner, uh, we do require a certificate of um rabies. And if your dog has been fixed, it's a good idea to also get a certificate of spay or neuter from your vet. Um, that'll help the process go nice and smoothly. Um, and then we look forward to our next election, which is also the approval or disapproval of um budgets for our town and for the school and any other items that we may talk about. Um, and that's going to be on March seventh. And um because we look forward to that time, this is a busy time for um the ballot making and um that includes if you are wanting to be on the ballot and you have not um been on our ballot before, we require a petition to be in to me by the nineteenth of January. That's not the people. That's if you require an article to be on the ballot. You must have um signatures on this petition of five percent of our voters and we have roughly three thousand-ish voters. Um, so if you have five percent of those, they have to be um uh voters in town and they have to be approved by me um that they are voters. So we always ask that you get extra signatures. Um, in addition to that, the thirtieth of January is when um all petitions need to be in um and all the signatures need to be in to me if you are up for reelection or if you are running for a position that's up for reelection in March. Um, so again, but that's one percent of our voters. So we're saying roughly thirty-five extra, maybe forty um signatures if um if they are town voters. So those are to be in by the thirtieth to me. And um I, oh, and the last thing is I am anticipating my third um employee to start very soon. I did get an update on her. She was supposed to start tomorrow. Fortunately, she has some things going on um health-wise that she's trying to get all set before she comes. And um we wish her all the best and I'm anticipating um her arrival. So I told her we're all ready for her and uh we can't wait to work with her. So um, once she does start, I'll bring her to the board and we'll all meet her. Her name is Taylor. Um, I believe that's all that I have for tonight.
Any questions for Carrie?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carrie.
You are welcome.
Barbara Pulling, our town planning commission chairperson. Good evening, Barb.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, uh, my camera's acting up, so we'll just talk this evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
So we've um, couple of things. We've closed out the energy survey. Uh, we had a total of sixty-one responses. Um, you know, in some ways, it seemed like we might have been speaking to the choir, if you will. we might have been speaking to the choir, if you will. Um you know, on the question if you have um roof or ground-mounted solar panels, um seventy-seven percent said they did. And I don't know where these places really are in town. Um so, but they also want more information about weatherization and, you know, um a carbon, more carbon-friendly appliances. Uh and they would like more sidewalks and bike lanes in town, but they don't want to take the bus. Uh so uh we've got some interesting, interesting things to go through, and so hopefully the energy committee can can meet sometime soon and start going through that and um and I can, I can give, I can show you the results ahead of time if if you'd like. Um and and give you some visuals of how how they're answered, or we can wait and have the energy committee um kind of distill everything. It's up, totally up to you, of course.
I I think the energy committee should do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
And let's see what else the pocket park. Um we, Mary and I are working on a um uh MOU with GMP. This is, this is the initial one, just so that everybody is on board and upfront about being supportive of what's going on. And um also, we're working on um what the construction stages, phases should be. And along those lines, I did have, just before Christmas, a conversation with the uh Stockbridge Muncie Tribal Preservation Officer. And uh it was a really interesting conversation, and I still need to talk to Chief Stevens, the Abenaki. Um but the Stockbridge Muncie, uh they, they um are very interested in the cultural assessment that GMP says it will do. They think there will be some resources found there um because they think um this, the area um could have been used for winter settlement. And they've also, th- they said, I mean, this officer said there's probably a high potential for resources there. So um they would like to, you know, be kept abreast. They would like to be able to use the park um for, he called it visiting delegations of tribal officials and elders. Um he uh had some um warnings about when best to do clearing work there. Uh but he also offered some help. And you know, if there are some resources found there, he would love to work on any educational components um that we might want from what's found. And um he he also offered just to assist in um in putting together a Native American history there uh for the park for use at some point. So um that's uh so that's moving along, you're totally supportive, totally supportive um this tribal organization, uh they they just, they want to work with us in in different capacities.
That's great. That's wonderful, y- you know. Because that area certainly was it was definitely a key in the early development of this region. I mean, that was the stopping point, right there at the falls, and uh that was a transfer point. That was a portage point for the Indians, so I don't doubt one bit that there's resources there. Super.
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, we might have some um interesting news uh when GMP does do that and and of course, Mary and I will will s- will, you know, stay on track of what uh how that's going, how that process, their relicensing and some of these other things that they've
I love the educational component, Barb, also. You know, I think if we find resources there, artifacts particularly, that if we were to document those and put them in our educational system, put them in our own educational system, library, for instance, it would be a great teaching point for the, you know, for the whole region, but certainly for the town, for the townspeople. Nice for the town kids to know the history of the town they live in, you know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. Um and so, so that's proceeding along pretty well. We'll want to keep that on track. Um and uh make sure GMP stays interested in all of this. Uh the only other thing I was going to bring up tonight is um it's a new state program um that um was originally funded by ARPA funds, but then they found them to be too restrictive for what they wanted to do with these funds, so they found some extra funds in the state. Uh a lot of extra funds, and this is the municipal energy resilience program. And it's for municipalities and to weatherize municipal buildings of all types um and to add renewables um to the mix. Uh you know, heat pumps, solar panels, things like that. Um it is still very much in the works and they're still making a lot of decisions about how this is going to um go. Um but there will be um, there's forty-five million dollars. Some of it will be for energy walkthroughs. They will require that first. Um and and then then uh towns can apply for actual projects. But even before that, um we'll want to inventory what buildings there are in the town and maybe prioritize that. The regional planning commissions are going to be working directly with towns around the state on this, and that will be our first step. And uh we'll shortly have a form that we can send um to you and other towns just to fill out. Where are the buildings, square footage? What do they usually use for energy, electricity? Um have there been uh upgrades in the past, that sort of thing? And we'll start the process there. It's an agency, the building and um and general services, BG, BGS, they've only worked with state buildings in the past. They've never worked with municipalities at all. So it's a learning process on their end, but they've got the money. And um and there there will be some time to get all of this done. Uh right now, the end date is like, excuse me, uh twenty twenty-eight, I believe, get all the projects done. So expect to hear more about that. I'll have that form, I can send out. Um I can send it to Bill, um or if you want the planning, the local, the town planning commission to fill it out. Um let me know, and we'll just start the process.
Um Barbara, Bill has inventoried all of our town buildings for insurance purposes with the League of Cities and Towns, so I suggest that maybe he get that to you and start with that.
Great, great, sounds good.
Question, Barb, and is this only proactive, it's not retroactive?
It's actually all retroactive. It's existing.
So we could get, could we get reimbursement for the heat pumps that we've already put in?
Oh, good question. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, if if the goal is to see that municipalities become energy efficient, I would think that if you just happen to miss the deadline by having put them in before they got to this thing, that maybe you could get reimbursed.
Yeah, maybe. The 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 walkthroughs.
You don't ask, you don't get.
I'm glad.
Yeah. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I mean, the walkthroughs, which they will require, um will, you know, will be like mini audits, mini energy audits. So if those heat pumps and such and and other things the town's already done um have made improvements in, you know, how much energy you've you've uh you're using and how much you cut back on, then, you know, maybe you won't score as high uh in the long run. And, you know, maybe you want to look at some buildings that haven't had anything done to them yet. Um wh- when we get to the project stage, projects can be as expensive as as a half a million dollars. But if every, it thi- this is open to every municipality in the state. So if everyone has, you know, that size project, the the money's going to go real fast. Um it will be competitive. Uh the audits, you know, are pretty much a given. Um but once we get to the project and, you know, construction money, that will be very competitive.
Are the audits paid for by this pot of money?
Yep. Yep, and 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 they're going to be simple ones, Mary. Um they're going to be walkthroughs and and they're thinking they're going to be able to do like three or four municipalities in a day. It's like, okay, um but but they will be on the
Ambitious program.
Yeah, it's ambitious.
So that's coming. And and I'm sorry, Don.
No, go ahead, Barb, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, and there's going to be, there's going to be money available to do outreach in the town. And real, I really haven't figured out how um how a town is going to spend eh four thou- four thousand dollars on outreach for this, but uh maybe we'll come up with a way. So that's another part of money.
Probably ought to be putting a a little tickler article in the circle in the next four additions and we'll pay for the circle with that money.
You know, I was just thinking that, Don.
That's outreach.
That's right.
And it is widely disseminated through the, you know, that's the whole town, so you don't get better outreach than that. Uh Fred, did you ever?
Uh well, just a thought, rather than trying to go for reimbursement on something we've already done, i.e. the heat pumps, could we possibly leverage some of this funds into doing some energy efficiency in a new public safety building?
Absolutely.
That's another good question, Fred, um that um occurred to me today, and I don't have an answer yet. Um if if pro- if if uh municipal buildings are on the drawing boards or almost under construction, um where do they fall? Are they eligible or not? So that that's a question to be answered, and they may not know the answer yet, um but that's a good one.
I think it's important that when you mention that, that you mentioned that it's already been approved by the by the the public, by the townspeople. In in a qualified vote of the town, so.
I think that was something Lyle Jepson was looking into, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll double dip.
I think it's part of the same program.
Could be.
I think it was all the same program.
Could be.
Yep.
Was that it, Barb?
Yeah, that's enough, huh?
Well, yeah. Did you want to mention the hub program and the invitation?
Oh, gosh, yes, thank you. Um yeah, it's it's just, we have, we have a tour set up for Rutland Town next Monday um starting at four. And it's to tour the facility. Uh Lyle will be there and the new director, the new person they hired um who will be trying to fill up the space, and there's a lot of space there. Um and it's a beautiful place. So, you know, it's probably going to be an hour or so or so next Monday. Um four to five-ish, um second floor of the Opera House on Merchant's Row. And um anyone, anyone is welcome, I think, from the town.
I'm told it's pretty impressive, so.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
Be a nice thing to see. I encourage anyone that's interested to uh attend that. Anyone from the town is welcome. Great. Any questions for Barb?
Barb, I'm sorry, I didn't see my emails toward the end of the day. Did did we settle on a date to go over the MOU?
Um I'm kind of busy until Friday, but anytime on Friday.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
All right, you too.
Uh next report will be Ed Dumas, our town police chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. I gave you a few of them today. Start with the uh two-week one, which is sixty-two calls, traffic stops being top one. So we had sixty-two calls for service with one of those being a traffic stop. Notice the retail thefts are up in the southern end of town again.
Yeah, I noticed they were Christmas shopping.
Yes. Have any questions on that one? Let me know.
Do these include people breaking into cars and stealing, or is it mostly retail theft within the shops?
This is mostly retail theft. Could be uh Cadillac, Cadillac converter.
Oh, yeah.
Anything that's a theft, retail thefts, auto cars, anything that's a theft related.
Have you been investigating the Twin State catalytic converter thefts?
Twin State.
Yeah, Twin State trucks down there on Ranbury Road.
Uh s- somebody else has that, I think it was Ted.
They got like six or seven trucks, they've been the catalytic converters have been ripped out.
Rental place down there?
Yeah, like three or four times.
Yeah.
Seven trucks, three or four times.
There's no video, there's, it's a
Unbelievable.
Yeah. It went down after we, one gentleman went to jail for a little bit, they started to pick up again, so.
Want to tell us about your all-time winner and the number of uh number of calls over Days Inn?
Uh one gentleman, we arrested him sixteen times in seven days for retail thefts at Green Mountain and trespassing and violation of conditions of release. I think that's it for now. So and then uh the yearly reports for town, if you had looked there, there, I think we had over we got traffic stops four and eleven, thefts three hundred and twenty-nine, suspicious assistance, non-hangups, directed patrols, crashes, motor vehicle complaints, police assist, agency assists.
Okay, so
This is, this is one of the town yearly report.
Gotcha.
And this is the VSP, what they do in the town.
And that's per year for VSP as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you notice, um if you go to the the pages in the back, there's a graph here. Wednesday seems to be a very busy day for some reason.
Shopping day.
And uh Sundays and Saturdays are busier for the town, or excuse me, for the state police than us, because uh currently, well, we did have an officer working Saturday, we have one out right now. So they're a little busier on those two days than we are. If you go to the town one, again, Wednesdays are a busy day. Uh Saturdays were about the same as them, I guess. Sundays are a little bit less. That's the yearly reports, and then if you go to uh this form here. Uh so we spent eighty-nine percent of our time in the southern end of the town taking care of the issues down there in our, in fiscal year two thousand, or the year two thousand twenty-two. So you go to the top, you have two thousand nineteen, we had uh that's where I have hundred and fifty-eight altogether, I think, uh two thousand twenty, one forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, five fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. It it doubled, tripled, one thousand four hundred and forty-six in two thousand twenty-two. And if you notice on two thousand twenty-two in December alone, we went from one oh four in November to one twenty-seven. That's when I was notified that DCF would be putting uh thirty more rooms at the uh Days Inn. So there's been a huge uptick since they've added uh the rooms for uh the uh cold weather housing project that they have done.
We got an update today that that it's at between forty and fifty right now at Days Inn.
Yeah.
And you need to, you need to begin to keep really accurate records on that section as opposed to the other side of the as opposed to the other side of the street because we have some things going on there too.
Where the people live that did the crimes, maybe?
The Days Inn.
I mean, sometimes we don't know who did it. We have to figure out.
But I mean, if you find, you know, if you have incidents that are, that are linked directly to there, to there, it would be good for us to know that.
Okay.
Could you make sure this chart with the, the two pager gets to Kevin Brown, please?
Yes, I'll have Lynn do that. Any questions on that there? No. I think it's pretty obvious. If you put more homeless people down at the end of the town, we're gonna have more of that. Simple as that. It's black and white right here, you know? And the next thing, and we talked about last time about, um, using some money to get a cruiser, uh, Ted went and got two quotes, one from Goss Dodge, uh, and also a gentleman from, uh, McGee of Springfield, uh, came up to him while he was down there. And so he gave us a price of total price for the car. It's a Dodge, uh, help me out here. It's not a Charger. Durango.
Oh, Durango.
Excuse me, yeah. I thought the answer was on your face. I don't know why. Anyways, uh, that was forty-six, five forty-seven, and Goss's was forty-seven, four fifteen. And Goss, I think you said, was a state person. So a little, like eight hundred dollars left, uh, less than, uh, uh, Springfield. They said they would give us twelve thousand five hundred for my cruiser. So the total would be, Goss says they don't know yet. They couldn't give us a price on it because it's, uh, they wouldn't be able to do it until the car came in. We brought the cruiser up and then they would tell us where it was worth at that point in time. But, uh, Springfield said they, you know, give us a price today, what it, what it was worth. It may go up or down. But it's, the total would be thirty-seven, thirty-four thousand forty-seven. We went with, uh, Springfield. So I guess I would ask the board, what would be your pleasure? Do we want to go ahead and tell them to go ahead and start making it? Cause, uh, the problem is most of the, all cruisers, they're shut down. They're built, not building them. So the quicker we do it, the quicker we can get. In line, it's going to be anywhere from six months to a year before we get up.
What's your pleasure?
Well, if we went through the, we're supposed to go through the bid process.
Yep.
Sounds like by going to the state, um, we've got the state bid process.
Right, right.
And then we've got this other, um, McGee offer.
Yes.
Which is, actually sounds like it comes in lower, but we don't know with Goss where we are because
Cause they, yeah, they'll give us a price on the cruiser, right?
Right.
Trade in. But they are a little over eight hundred dollars less than.
Were you folks satisfied that we followed the bid process?
Yeah. If there was a state bid and we're coming in less than state bid, I, I guess I feel pretty comfortable with that. Did you?
Yep.
Did you try Rutland Dodge down here at all?
Uh, we did not. We bought the truck from them.
Yeah.
So.
I just didn't know if they
They treat us good. I had nothing bad to say about them.
Yeah.
So.
You want to?
Well, we can go get one more, one more bid price and ask them.
Yeah, we should probably do.
Try to get our money local, maybe.
Well, it's always good to try to keep it local if you can.
Yep.
You know, we've done business with them before, so give them a chance.
Okay.
Tell them to sharpen their pencil and maybe we'll end up
Okay.
To the, to the good.
Okay.
And
So I'll wait on that then, we'll
Well, the answer, once you get that bid, the answer will be yes, we're gonna go with the bid process. We take the lowest bid.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
No, just stay safe. Have a safe and happy new year.
So far, we are.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support. I really appreciate you doing anything you do for us as far as the town attorney and helping us, uh.
We're, we're working on some more too. Good. Cross the street. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
And right on the chief's heels would be our first constable, Mike Delahanny.
Good evening. Happy New Year, guys.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mike. Happy New Year to you.
Right. Um, Not a ton, um. Excited about what twenty-three is gonna bring. Um, obviously I'll continue to help Chief Dumas and, and his team as much as possible down the south end or wherever it may take us. Um, but, uh, I do want to get into, into our, uh, neighborhoods a little bit more, do some more community policing in our hood, in, in our neighborhoods. Uh, it's needed. Um, there was a stolen vehicle actually just around the corner from me, uh, like a week or so ago. So, um, if we can try our best to deter that in the neighborhoods as well. So I know we're thin, um, and I, I understand the, uh, the need for us on the south end, but I do want to make sure that, um, the rest of the town and the taxpayers are seeing your presence as well. So, um, like I said, it's needed. So I will, I will handle that on my end. Um, maybe I can talk John Paul into it as well. So, um, but yeah, no, I'll be out there in, in the neighborhoods to make our presence known as well. So. But yeah, that's it. That's it. Ready, ready to, uh, see what twenty-three brings.
Protect and serve.
You know it, my friend. You know it.
Take care, Mike.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. John Paul Fagnon, our town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. Good evening, JP.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, JP.
The ma- main piece of business I'd like to accomplish tonight is, um, I'm hoping you have the architect's request to bid document in front of you. He has targeted five or six companies that he plans on sending, uh, this document to. Uh, I just need the board to approve it so I can tell him and the project will be going out to bid. You can see the dates that he's listed in the document. There's going to be a mandatory contract meeting included in that. Um, but all in all, the thing is ready to go. We just need that certificate signed. I did receive an email this afternoon indicating that the architect is agreeable with the changes that Kevin has made in the contract. But that's not necessary to be signed now. We first need to get the documents out to bid, see what the bids are, award a bid, and then we can sign that contract with the architect to continue.
So you need approval of the draft as amended by our town attorney?
Uh, uh, tonight I need approval of the, uh, the request to bid. I, I don't know. Bill, were you able to get that printed out? I know it came late.
They have it.
Oh, okay. Great, great. So.
Invitation to bid written there on top.
The big thick thing. Oh, there you are.
That one, okay. Well, that was the on-the-desk packet.
Can't sneak anything by you.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, um, the request to bid.
Motion has been made that we improve, the, yeah, motion has been made that we approve the invitation to bid document that's before us.
Second.
And it has been seconded discussion.
Well, first of all, I got, I got issues. We're putting a building out to bid that, I mean, if I want to see the bid documents, I'm gonna have to go to the architect and see them. I mean, I haven't come across my desk. I know nothing about this building. You want me to sign for a four million dollar building? And I mean, I haven't seen bid specs. I haven't seen blueprints. I haven't seen anything at all.
Well, what effort, what effort have, what, what effort have you made to see it? They're all available at the architect's office and I emailed the board all of the specifications a week ago.
I've asked for a meeting a couple times.
There, there's no need for a meeting. This project is ready to go out to bid. The issues you're raising don't come up until we get the bids. We're doing what the voters are.
I don't even know what we're putting out to bid. I mean, you, you could be putting up a Build-A-Bear, you could be putting up a Build-A-Bear workshop for all I know. I haven't seen nothing.
Seriously, Kurt, we've had drawings, we've had elevations posted at the town office, we've had them listed in the hallway. You haven't taken time to look at that and now you're complaining?
Is that, is that what, is that what we're building? I mean, I haven't seen final prints. I saw, I saw, um, a site plan that came through my email, but I haven't seen any interior designs. I don't know. I haven't seen any specs on what we're putting in this thing. I don't know anything.
Well, that's because you haven't taken the time to learn and I'm here to tell you you don't need to because we've hired professionals to cover all of that. This is a process and an agreed process that we started before you got on the board. But if you're sincere about wanting to have all this information, it's readily available to you, Kurt.
Do we have, uh, what's the latest drawing? Are they, uh, Bill used to post things on the wall outside his office. Do we have the latest drawings out there?
I don't think so. I put, I put them up when I got them.
Okay. So if we could post them out there, that would be one step. Um, and then JP, you probably heard the conversation uh, from Barbara Pulling and Kurt's reference to Lyle Jepson's, um, there's pots of money out there that may be available to cover some of the energy efficiency things within um, the project. Are we, are we tying those in somehow? Um, the possibility that we could get some money paid for?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Ted and the guys in the fire department have got an eagle eye on all the funds that are becoming available and they're applying for everything that's applicable. And that, that's all to our good. It'll supplement the monies that we have dedicated. And depending on where, where the bids come in, uh, you know, we could end up in a pretty good position.
Also, Ted Washburn was just on, uh, videos today. Homeland Security, I think it is, for, uh, the Cascade Station that the fire department needs to learn that bid to put out, so we use, uh, some money for that.
Right. I talked to Ted today also and, uh, and he's gonna be, he's gonna be calling Lyle Jepson and getting the specific, the, the specific department heads that he needs to deal with for every application that applies to the, to the fire station, police department building. He'll, he'll be on it.
So have we had a, like, have we had a committee of maybe some town experts that are, you know, plumbers, electricians, builders, review all this to make sure our plans aren't missing something, make sure our bid specs aren't missing something. I know we hired architects and engineers, but I have seen architects and engineers miss quite a lot of things in my career, even growing up as a kid, all the way up through my career now. I've seen a lot missed. And if we don't have other eyes from outside this project looking on it, we're gonna have issues like the last station. That's all I'm saying. And here we are pushing this out to bid and we want, I mean, the meeting's next week, the site visit's next week, and we want bids back in another four weeks after that, or three weeks, whatever it is. I mean, we're pushing this right along and I think we're gonna get caught with our pants down. We're not doing our due diligence.
You know, Kurt, I'm really disappointed in your comments because I have alerted this board since August of last year that we were focusing on getting this out to bid in December and January. And for you to be bringing up these issues, and the board also made a decision, they didn't want to micromanage this project. We wanted to tr- to trust the professionals whose work we have looked at, whose reputation we have vetted and who work well with the contractors that they want to send these bid documents to. I don't see what good it does for you to come in at the eleventh hour and start raising these concerns when you've had almost four to five months to answer your own questions. So with all due respect, it's time to put this project out to bid. We're almost a year from when the voters directed us to do this. I've worked my tail off to get it to where it is now and I'm a little concerned about the good faith of your questions at the eleventh hour. That bid document is straightforward. It moves this project along and it gives us the best chance to get the best contractors at the best price.
Well, I, I just have one question, JP. Do we, do we, uh, and this happens to come up because I don't know, in talking with our, uh, transfer station manager, he was talking about a rendering. Do, do we have an architect's rendering of, of the finished project? I mean, an exterior, uh,
Yes, Don. They have been at the town off, yeah, and the most recent and final ones have been there since the end of November. Uh, this, this is, you know, this stuff has been pretty well set for at least four to six weeks.
No news to us.
Is that one, is that one in color? I mean, do we have a color rendition of a? No? Oh, I don't, I don't know. I didn't know what it was. I think, I think it ought to be in here on the board posted so that, um, maybe we could put it up right here so that the camera could see it. You know?
So I, I agree with Don. We should have something posted, but probably more likely out either in the main hallway where, cause this room is sometimes locked. Um, or in the hallway by Bill's office, which is usually open, and that's where others have been displayed. And I would like something to have on a display board to take to pre-town meeting in January so folks see what the, the latest iteration that we're going out to bid with looks like.
All of that stuff's available, Mary. We can, and we can even get large prints of it for you.
Okay, that would be helpful, I think. Please.
Yeah, I, I really do. I think that would be helpful for town meeting. But we have a motion and a second, I believe. Uh, and is there any further discussion on, on the motion? Hearing none?
Think all the board members should be concerned with signing for a four million dollar building to go out to bid when they, I mean, you, you've all said that you haven't seen latest prints. You don't know nothing about it.
Well, I saw them when they first came in. I looked at them.
Yeah.
I looked at them in Bill's office, you know.
You're, you're gonna sign on it? That's your prerogative.
Well, we, I also am not an architect and I'm not a fire chief and I'm not a police chief and I, at some point I do have to respect what those folks have done working with the architect. Um, I do want to see them and I want the public to see them. But public has already approved the concept. JP's been working on this. Do I wish I'd seen renderings? You know, that explained a little bit more along the way, maybe, and maybe, maybe I am in the same boat as you are, Kurt. Maybe I haven't paid enough attention, but, um, just, I, I would like to see what the place looks like. I'm gonna vote in favor of this motion because I want to get the thing out to bid. Cause we are a little behind where we said we were going to be. So I appreciate your concerns, but I trust the folks that we asked to look into this.
Are there any other, uh, points of discussion that haven't been already brought up? Anyone have? Hearing none. I call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to, um, approve the invitation to bid signified by saying aye.
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 Poked.
And the chair will break to tie and vote aye. Motion passes three to one. I'm sorry that Joe didn't get to vote, um, but time is of the essence here, so.
I would just say that the bid specs reserve the right to the select board to reject any and all. So if you find something.
They do. Yeah, and if we, we, they're huge. I can get a, a notebook of the specs to have at Bill's office. The, the, the actual spec notebook is huge. So reproducing it's a, you know, you don't want to do it unless you have it.
No.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
This is done and, uh, we hope to have the final, uh, copy of the AIA one oh one and the two oh one without any draft. Yeah. Without any draft on, in the background and with the, uh, changes that were made by our town attorney incorporated in them. And thank you very much, JP. Anything else?
That's all I have for tonight. Nope, that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
JP, there's the, uh, the, the water and, uh, the permit applications are in their packet as well.
Oh, thank you, Bill, for that. Uh, yes, we, the engineers you'll see have prepared, um, permit applications that we need to have signed tonight as well. um, permit applications that we need to have signed tonight as well.
Okay, I move we approve the, looks like wastewater and potable water supply permit application. And that's the one, right?
That's the one?
Yes.
Where's the, uh?
Yeah.
Is there an approval?
And I'm authorizing, I moved to, part of my motion is to authorize Don to sign on behalf of the board.
Just five lines and then there.
Right there?
The sheet.
Where's the?
Landowner signature sheet, right?
I don't have a signature sheet. Oh, wait a minute. Well, yep, I got it, I got it. It was on the bottom here. It's a landowner signature sheet.
Hmm, yeah, it looks like there's five, five lines.
Where are you?
Well, I got two things here and I don't know which one applies.
We're, we're struggling with the, uh,
Runner behind that.
What's the landowner's signature sheet? Wastewater system. I got this one here.
Wastewater.
So Bill, Bill, while they're, while they're working through that, there was also the notification forms that had to be signed.
Yeah, everything you've, you've sent to me, I've put in the packet.
Oh, okay, great, because there's. Two, there's two forms.
Okay, we've got two. Yep, we got him JP.
Well, there's actually, there's a sewer. Oh, that's a different one. That's the, uh, that's the waste, uh, splash. Okay, landowner's signature and the certification required notification.
Yeah, you've got that right.
But this one, all five board members can sign.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we need a vote.
So, yeah, motion would be in order then on two documents. A landowner's signature sheet for wastewater system and potable water supply permit application. The state of Vermont, Department of Environmental Conservation and the certification. Uh, no required notification form five.
There is no requirement about isolation zones. That's what that one is.
So.
So Mary, you already made the motion.
I made the motion. I, and, and so the no required notification motion, I, I would add that Don should be authorized on behalf of the board, but the WW permit um, would be signed by the full board if we approve it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous and we will sign.
Um, going back, not to make a change, but to ask JP a question on the AIA document.
Yeah.
Binding arbitration versus mediation, I think, um, in the past JP, you've recommended we go with the mediation and not have a binding arbitration clause in this. Is this the appropriate place to put that or is that something we deal with once the bids come back in?
That, that would be when the bids come back in, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so we're gonna see those. And while those are being signed, we do have the sewer allocation application in the packet as well and a water connection request. Uh, both of these are for the splash holdings. Eco Vermont LLC. What's your pleasure?
I have three people from.
What's that?
You have three people online that are waiting for that topic.
Okay.
So number C and number which one, jot down.
Yeah, C. Two documents.
Yeah.
Well, that's if there were, if there are any questions, right, Bill? I mean. Pardon me?
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
There's, there's plenty of allocation for it.
Yeah, we have plenty of water and sewer allocation left. So it would be coming on us to approve these. What's your pleasure, board?
Um, I'll move, we approve the uh, sewer allocation application and the water connection request. I, I would like to hear from the folks on, on the call if this motion is seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and the motion has been seconded. Now we're in discussion and welcome gentlemen to the meeting.
Hello, uh, I'm Steve Diglio, engineer at CAS Consulting. Uh, with me is Aaron Vincelletti, who's with the owner, who, who works for the owner.
Well, happy new year to both of you.
Happy new year. Um, one thing of note, before I let Aaron take the floor, is that in prior meetings, you guys have discussed with us a need to, um, you know, jet out the sewer line to the pump station, um, and that is part of, uh, we will be doing that. That has, that has not been forgotten and it's also at this point a draft. And it's also a draft condition in the Act 250 application at this point.
Good. I see it under number five in your sewer allocation, so thank you for including that.
Very good. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope, we're excited. This is Aaron again. Um, we're excited to start the whole process. And, uh, we hope to be able to start taking down the building here very shortly. And, uh, and start working with the earth and, uh, moving the project forward and have an opening, um, early, uh, summer.
Well, we're excited to have you in the town. We're happy to work with you and, uh, we welcome you as new commercial residents.
I, just to give you a little background, um, Eco Car Wash started up in, uh, Milton, Vermont. Um, we have a location in Williston, in Plattsburgh. Um, we have one going up right now in, uh, um, Shelburne. Um, and we also will have one going up in Brautleboro and down in Bennington. And, um, the buildings are, are basically all recycled. They come from decommissioned battleships that are all reforged up in Detroit, Michigan. Um, I, I was a former Marine, so, and I'm from Vermont. So, and it's a little homage to, um, to the service people that are out there working very hard for us. Um, and then, um, all the soaps that we use, um, I know we're a very eco-friendly state. It's all biodegradable soaps. And, um, they, we collect the water from our roof systems to be recycled into the, into the washes. And the unique thing that we're doing is whether you're, wherever you come across an Eco Car Wash, um, if you are a past member, you'll be able to use that wash.
Nice.
So a, a question, um, I noticed that your water gallons per day is eighty-six hundred fifty-nine and your sewer discharge per day is sixty-eight thirty-six. I'm a, am I correct to assume that that is, you're recycling some of the water and there's some evaporation potentially?
Um, yes, so we are recycling water. Um, and we have several tanks that, um, hold all the water that comes from the beginning, um, part of the wash, not the end part of the wash where, um, some of the cleaning agents and stuff or guaxes and stuff that are put on. And then, um, yes, uh, there is also evaporation that happens with car washes, um. You'll see most car washes, you know, cars are dripping water from the cracks and crevices that get down into the doors and trunks and hoods and whatnot. And then there's the atomization of, of water droplets into the air as well.
Gotcha.
Yeah, um, beyond that, we also are, there's gonna be a rain harvesting system that's gonna be incorporated into this design. Um, and, uh, as Aaron said, there is a recyclations, uh, system.
With your rain cycling system, what is your storage capacity on that?
We, uh, did a storage of a, a little more than one inch of rain over the roof of the building and it's only for the building that we're taking the, uh, the rain harvesting from. So, uh, so it'd only be rooftop runoff that we're trying to capture into the walls.
Yeah, but where, where are you putting it? You're putting it in a storage tank?
Yeah, storage tanks, uh, underground, underground storage vaults.
Capacity of?
Um, let me pull up that detail. It's about 10,000 gallons total.
Okay. Nice. Any other questions, board members? You ready for the question? All those in favor of approving the sewer and water allocations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? It's unanimous. Congratulations, guys. You're on your way.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you, guys. Thank you, board.
I don't know. We're somewhere in here. I have an agenda. Okay. Bill, you're up. We've taken some of your stuff already, but.
Them first or?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, that would be appropriate. And it would the board's approval, huh?
That, that were me.
Them. Yeah, out of courtesy. They've been very patient, but you know, I know they're interested in the town's business.
They're writing a book.
They're writing a book. We're, we're funding them with a hundred grand or close to it.
Hundred and two.
Barry Cohen, it's been quite a while. Welcome.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Happy Hanukkah as well.
Thank you. I'm Barry Cohen. I'm the president of the Rutland Free Library. And I'm here tonight. I wanted to introduce the newest trustee is Ken Watson.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, good evening. Uh, happy new year. Thanks again to all of you. Um, I don't want to take too much time, but I just thought I'd, uh, come give a brief introduction, let you know who I am. Um, uh, my family and I moved to town in June. Uh, my wife is in healthcare administration, works at Rutland Regional, um, as their chief nursing officer. Uh, I have three boys, all of whom are at Rutland Town School. Um, two of whom have Mr. O, have Mr. O as their PE teacher. Um, uh, the youngest is in fourth grade. Uh, and so, um, I, uh, have some experience working on, on boards, doing community outreach and, uh, fundraising in the past. Um, and, uh, have been looking for a way to, uh, give back to the community that's been so gracious and welcoming, uh, since we moved here. We, we have been trying to get to Vermont for a long time and, and when this job, uh, the hospital came up, uh, we jumped at the opportunity. Um, and so, um, we purchased a home, um, near halfway farms, just off of East Pittsburgh Colonial, uh, in that area up there. And, uh, I'm excited to, to have the opportunity to, to work with you all and, and with the library. We're active, active particip- participants, members have been since, uh, within the first week of getting here, so, um, uh, I thank you for your time and, and looking forward to a, uh, productive relationship.
Thank you.
Nice.
Well, you're a neighbor up the road from me.
Are we?
If you come up the East Pittsburgh Road and you look up on the hill, you'll see our flag. We own the farm on East Pittsburgh Road, all the way back to Route Seven, Russell Farm. Yep.
And you're in a home that, uh, one of our great town residents happened to build, Mr. Del Bianco.
Oh, right. Yes, yes. So I've seen, I've seen the name. So we, uh, we, I couldn't be happier to hear you, uh, and it's wonderful.
Where did you escape from?
Uh, Denver. Uh,
Good move.
So not, not too, not too, uh, big of a jump, um, but it was, uh, we're, we're happy to be here. I went to school in Boston. I have family in Western Massachusetts, so, um, family roots in New England for a long time, trying to get here, especially as my boys get older. It was important for us to have them be members of the community that they could get involved in and, and.
You know, it's a great school. It truly is, so.
Been very pleased, so.
So you have another neighbor too, because that's one of the Hathaways.
Oh, okay.
And he's right up the road from you.
Yep.
There, there was another family in town, Watson family. And I don't know, you might be distant relatives.
It's entirely possible.
He, he was an insurance man, Joe Watson.
Okay, okay. Uh, I think I've seen, seen the name. We, we've, we've traced the roots, um, mostly to Massachusetts and New Hampshire, but it's entirely possible.
So what made you decide on? Rutland.
On Rutland, um, it really was, it was the, the job opportunity for my, for my wife. Um, she's, as I mentioned, the, the Rutland was looking for a chief nursing officer and, and, um, she was the chief nursing officer at a hospital in the Denver metro area and she was recruited out here and everything fell into place. She'd interviewed for a couple of positions that, that didn't end up working out and this was the right time and the right place and
Perfect.
We'd been here before and knew we wanted to come back.
Great.
And it's a great hospital as well.
It is, it is, it is a great hospital. A lot of, a lot of things going on right now and I think they have a bright future.
So what would you like to pursue for the library when you're on the board?
Um, well, I think primarily from the get-go, uh, it's gonna be a learning, uh, expedition for me. Um, I, I, I joined right before the, the holiday break, so, um, this January meeting will be my, my very first meeting. Um, I think, um, as I mentioned, one of, one of the intents that I had for, for stepping up for this position in the first place was, um, to get myself involved in the community and I'd like to kind of be a catalyst, uh, for the library's interaction with, with Rutland Town. I'm, I'm, I have a lot to, to learn about what has been done so far. Um, and I'm anxious to, to, to throw myself into that work. Um, and you know, I think the, the library is certainly an important resource for, for any community and so, um, I'm eager to, to find out. Uh, you know, as I, as I mentioned, what's been done so far and how we can, can continue to improve that.
Okay, great.
A good improvement, and this is not, well, I, it might be a veiled criticism, but, uh, it might also be part of just past practice. Maintain a close relationship with our board in giving us information as to what the hospital is. Or yeah, hospital, what the library is, uh, has, you know, on its, uh, on its planning board, uh, on its finances, on things like moving the facility and things. Uh, we have, for, for better or worse, we have had a very sparse relationship with our board members here at board meetings. And you know, I don't want to put a lot of extra burden on you, but if you could come in,
Absolutely.
You know, and encourage your other board members, Rutland Town Board members also to come in to keep us informed so that we don't have to read something in the Rutland Herald that we should have heard before, directly, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and consider that even though you're appointed by the library organization, as representatives of Rutland Town, you represent our interests to the library.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I, I, I duly noted and I certainly intend to have an active, be active and engaged.
Good.
Absolutely.
Good. It's a pleasure meeting you and.
As well. Thank you.
And welcome, welcome, welcome to the town as well.
Yes, thank you very much.
How did the plowing go up in your way? We can get it, uh, we can get an evaluation, right?
Gonna say, we were a little bit nervous about it, but, uh, it was, I, I have no complaints. It couldn't, couldn't have been better. Even all the way down onto our street, so, um.
Now there's a guy from Denver.
In sign over.
Dave, there's a guy from Denver that gets real slow.
Blast out there.
Well, and I have three, uh, three young, uh, three young men at my disposal who can at least get the driveway cleared.
Oh, yeah.
They do that, huh? They get an, they get an allowance for that?
Take some prodding sometime.
There you go. Any questions from board members or comments?
Good meeting you. As well. Thanks very much.
I'm real here.
Congratulations on your uh, on your promotion. You're smiling, so you do consider it a promotion.
Yes, I'm looking forward to this. I ex- expect I'll be the president for the next two years. And looking forward to it. I've been on the board for four years as the treasurer. And now I'll be the president and now I'm, I'm really excited about this library.
Well, I know that you watch your pennies pretty carefully. From past experience.
I do. Run a tight ship. Uh, that has not, uh, our fundraiser for this coming year and to be determined.
Okay.
I'd like to see that return.
I'll be watching.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. You wanna do Jim? Yeah, well, he's been patient here too, too.
God, was that you, Jim?
Yeah, I heard that one from over here.
That was my non-operated shoulder.
That was your what shoulder?
Non-operated.
Nine?
Non.
Nine, okay. So you had one operated on?
Yeah, one done, one to come.
Did you have a repair or replaced?
Full replacement.
That's what they're talking about mine.
Yeah. It's, if you got pain, it's worth it.
Oh, my God. I'd like to spend a night sleeping. I don't.
Yeah, that's uh.
Like a toothache.
Yeah. I can agree.
Yeah.
So, um, I sent uh my official letter of resignation into Bill to be packet and I assume you've received it.
Yep.
And uh. And so.
Is gonna kill me. Probably here. There it is.
Got it. And uh, my wife happened to notice that my name was in the minutes of the um select board meeting on the twentieth, and so we jumped on to see what was going on and um I was surprised that there was mention of somebody contacting me and I I never get contacted, so. Um, that's why I had already sent that letter in at that point, but that's um part of why I'm here.
There are two things to.
Yep.
We, we were gonna contact you about the uh the uh tax collector handbook.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, but then Bill did some research, you know, one.
Yeah, there's, so I reached out to V L C T and they're replacing it. So i- in a couple of weeks, that's what what is there is no longer valid. So there's a new one. We're gonna get a copy of the new one.
Yep, which is what I already have and I was gonna put out it there on the server, but during the, I sent uh to everyone that they were having the uh, training for the collectors of delinquent taxes on the fourteenth. I know I got it to you the tenth, which didn't give you a whole lot of time, but that was um I've already received that book, but they made it very clear that that was my copy and that I shouldn't give it to anybody else, so I.
That's how they make money. That's what we understand.
Yeah, so um, it's very worthwhile to get um. Um, I don't know if you need individuals or if the town buys it, it's a shared thing for the board or whatever. Um, part of what um I heard in that meeting and the discussions of what you're looking to do in March, which is to put a um an article on the ballot to possibly change to a different form of tax collector. Ie instead of uh elected and appointed or hired or there's like seven different options in the book on how a town can have a collector of delinquent taxes. And it's also a requirement, so the state put in the bottom of it, if um, if nothing's ever done about it, then the constable automatically gets that job. So.
That he left.
So the money does get collected.
Yes, somehow. Yes, somehow.
The other, the other meeting that we were gonna have, and we still can.
We should.
Uh, was with our personnel committee, but you know, between budgeting.
Oh, yeah.
And we have had some medical, you know, Sharon has had some medical.
Yep, and as you know.
You know, it's just been a really busy time and hard, hard to schedule extra stuff at this time of year. So once we get done with that, we can.
I don't know what your deadline is, though, to get an article into the March elect um uh election as far as.
Notifying people.
Somewhere between the nineteenth of January and the thirtieth, and I suspect it's closer to the nineteenth. But I don't know for sure.
Um, in light of that, um, uh, this is for the board members, if you wanna, it's just a single sheet. It's some thoughts of mine that I'd like to discuss with the um, personnel committee, uh, and one copy of that can go to to Bill because I have, I put in an extra copy for Bill.
Thank you.
There's one for Joe there and and one for Bill. It should be, unless somebody got themselves two at a time. Yeah. And so um, as we've discussed before, the most appropriate thing is me to meet with the Personnel Committee. But I would like to invite the rest of the board to to sit in on the meeting, just so all, everything we discuss, because the board's gonna have to make a decision as a whole ultimately. It, it would be helpful if all the board members are there for you to get to where you need to be before it's too late. So that would be my suggestion. Um, as, and I'm very available at this point. Um, the other reason I didn't get a hold of the Personnel Committee is, um, one, my wife went in and had her hip replaced, so I've been playing uh physical therapist, nurse, and about everything else you can think of in the house for for a couple of months, but uh she's doing very well and uh was out driving on her own today and everything, so we're, we're doing well.
Do you want him to contact you to make some good wishes to her from us?
Thank you, I will. And she's actually, um, if my name's up there, she's up there. Yep, she's listening in.
One of the things we realized is that we didn't have an official letter or date.
Yes, and I understood that.
I'm, I'm really glad that you did this.
Yeah, and I, you know, originally I wanted to make it for uh Dec- December thirty-first or January one. But then I realized that if I do that, then I can no longer collect the stuff and and you'd all have to wait until you got a replacement. So I, that's why I put in March thirty-first as my official date in discussions with the uh Personnel Committee. Um, depending on what the decisions are and what paths you wanna take, um, I can put in a new letter of resignation if things look lined up for somebody to come in and take my place before that time.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Yeah.
That's it. So, so what, what I would do is see when, when we're available, when we can both meet and then give you a ring, Jim.
But he said he'd like to meet with the full board.
Well, no sense of meeting with the Personnel Committee if he's gonna meet with the full board.
Well, no, no, no. I'll meet with the uh Personnel Committee and any other board members who can make whatever meeting we do.
Can't do that, because if we have even one more member, that's why we have two.
Okay.
Members, because then it has to be a warrant meeting and it's gotta be so many days before and.
Okay.
Actually, that's not a bad idea. Then any one of us can come into it and not make a mess of the open meeting law, so.
If the Personnel Committee is meeting and we have a committee meeting, it gets, it gets warned. That's, that's normal.
Oh, okay. So we're good.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, yeah, so hardly. Um, and looking at my, sorry, bifocals. Um, let's see, today is the third.
Third.
So uh tomorrow is not good, and I figure that's too soon anyways, but um I'm I'm basically free after today through this week and next week. So. Yeah, any, any time day or whatever. So, so you know, what I'm saying is you guys figure out what's good for you guys and let me know.
Just let me know.
Wanna do it next week?
Sure.
When? Tell me. It's good for you.
Me? God, the whole week, I'm free.
Yeah, yeah.
Wednesday, the eleventh?
That's fine. Um, again, remember, you probably only got till the nineteenth to get things figured out. And do you have a board meeting between that you can?
Uh, we have one on the seventeenth.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just being very uh.
No, we have. Um. Five?
It's up to you.
Five o'clock, okay.
Sure.
Would you rather do it?
That's five P M., right?
I can do it in the middle.
I'd like to do it earlier rather than.
Well, that's fine.
What about five A M.? Farmer talking now.
Um, as far as I know, I'm available, so.
So Wednesday morning?
Not particularly. So I could, I could do morning. Um, yeah.
I'd rather do morning.
Our Wednesday morning, nine o'clock.
Nine, nine on the eleventh.
Yep.
Hey. Is that okay, Kirk?
Yeah, maybe. If I make it, I'll make it.
Yep.
Hard, hard telling this time of year.
Mm-hmm.
Where I'll be.
And um, Bill, would this meeting be on Zoom or can it be?
Yeah, we'll be here.
Okay, so. Um, hopefully Joe can make it too.
Yeah.
On that possibly and um uh, I'd like to be showing you a few things, so the meeting may be a couple hours. Okay, so, yeah, and also I want to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, we'll probably have plenty.
Yep. Get them ready and.
Goes any longer than that, you'll be required to provide snacks.
No problem. I, I know where the candy jar is.
Me too. If you don't know, I can show you.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, open that up. I gave all my candy away.
What you do that for?
Cause I'm not supposed to be eating this stuff with the diverticulosis. Or diverticulitis.
So. Just so I have it, what was the date again? The eleventh?
Wednesday, the eleventh at nine A M.
Okay, that's good. Um, I gave you that sheet and you've got the letter. Um, I also just wanted to say that, you know, as part of my letter of resignation, um, I'd like to just read the bottom statement, which is to the voters of Rutland Town. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you for the last five years. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you and contribute to the continued operation of the local government. So.
And we appreciate the job that you've done.
Thank you.
The proof is in the pudding. It's one of the lowest delinquency rates anywhere around.
Okay, thank you.
Still haven't caught up to Dick Lloyd, but close. Alright, so.
He was a, he was a ticker.
Yep.
Yes, he was.
Yeah, and, and, and the times are changing too for people, so now it's a little bit of everything.
Yep.
Anybody got questions or comments to Jim, other than Happy New Year?
Happy New Year to you.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome and uh look forward to, to doing this and helping the town get in a situation where it's a little more manageable, because I think the way things are changing.
Yep.
For requirements and and all of that, that an elected official for this position, I don't think is um stable.
Yeah.
So.
When it's an elected position, anybody can run.
Yes.
And with their, with name recognition, I mean, you know.
Yes.
So you really wanna have somebody.
No, no required qualifications. That's.
Others make you.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all you've done.
Yep.
I don't think there are any letters left in the packet. Bill, you got? More?
Ken Watson. All right, good evening. Not much left. Uh, we got, we got through all the items in the packet. Did that pretty well, so I we, we'll just, yeah, just leave everything you've signed there and I'll, I'll collect that. Uh, so just a, just a couple of topics to cover and we'll be in good shape. I, I have received several reports for the town report. Um, I have a few departments, a couple of departments that haven't gotten to me yet.
Let's check out the ones not making eye contact.
Yeah. So, well, so, so, some, some of the, the harder ones actually already turned theirs in, so that's, that's good. Uh, but if, if uh, if, if I can get this by the end of the week, that'd be very helpful, because after the planning commission meeting on Thursday uh, is when this room is gonna come into town report mode and all next week is we start doing that, so I am gonna have a very busy week next week uh with that. So um, I'll, I'll, I'll let you meet in the room for the Personnel Committee, but beyond that, don't, don't use it. Um. Uh, we, I, I, we have a uh, a uh, relationship with Invest E A P, which is a, which is an organization that works, helps parts, parts of E L C T that has uh resources for employees. Um, and they have a, a large variety of things they can help people with, from counseling services to help finding babysitters, also all sorts of stuff. Uh, and we have two meetings planned. Um, one in January, one in February for, for any, I'll, I'll put it out to the town employees. We just got this finalized today, so uh, she's gonna come down and meet in person. One is January seventeenth at nine A M. The other one's gonna be in February. I'll get the date on that one. But that's gonna be for anybody to, in the town to come. Um, the, the police department has their own program uh, through them, but uh this covers all sorts of stuff and it's all, it's free services to uh, to town employees, so uh, it's a great resource, so I'm gonna, I'll make sure to get that out to everybody to uh.
Called again, Bill.
Invest E A P. Uh, and so she'll, she'll go over all our services and and everything, so it's a really, it's a really great program. Uh. So, Don, you, you mentioned a couple minutes ago, and that was a great, great segue. So paperwork for, for the meetings and and packets, things like that, so uh, the, there, there, we, tech, technology exists, believe it or not, that we don't have to send out packets anymore in the mail. They could actually be electronic. If you wanted them to be, I send out a digital copy.
I don't want them electronic.
Okay, so we spend anywhere between ten and thirty dollars every, every board meeting.
I want it on.
Okay. On, but we, we spend that on postage and paper and time, things like that, so there, there are options for doing it electronically. If, if you would like it, we can, we can look at that. If you don't, you don't, that's fine.
Don't.
Um.
How'd you like to be Steve trying to argue with her?
Doesn't have to be all or nothing.
And I, and I got it on a hard copy.
That's fine.
That, nobody said, oh wait, oh gee, I missed that.
Wasn't talking about you.
I am part of this group, my friend.
Well, it's not all, it's not all or nothing. We don't have to, it wouldn't have to be like, if we go one way, we go one way. It, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. But if, if we want, if people want to explore that, that's, that's fine, so.
Holy God, I'm glad I'm not married to you.
Um, and uh, the other thing is the, the calendar invitation. So I send, I try, for meetings like that, I put out calendar invites. Are those useful? Do people get them, see them? Does it help remind you of meeting stuff? Okay.
You mean the, the, every Monday morning?
Well, there's that. There's the email I send around with the meeting schedules and and the committee agenda items, but for like committee meetings, I'll send out like the email with, with that on there. It's like committees get reminders of those. Um, the board, I think the board meeting still has a calendar invite on there, but that way pop, usually would pop up a reminder to you that there's a meeting coming up, so.
Always helpful to have a reminder.
Alright, uh, it's, it's easy to do, but and I'll, so I'll, I'll keep doing that, but there's, there's some other, there's some other things that we can, we can do, but involves a little more, a little more technology, so we'll, 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 we'll get you, we'll, we'll ease you into it. It's okay, okay. Um, that's, that's all, that's all I had. I didn't really have, we, we covered everything else, so we're in, we're in good shape. We do have plenty of sewer allocation left, by the way. There's still like a hundred and eighty-something thousand gallons left, so. But it's the end of the year and uh I am going to bug Rutland City the next few weeks to get the year-end numbers and we'll start the review of that, so.
If you wanna save money on mailing my packet.
Yeah.
I can just come over and pick it up.
Me too.
That's fine.
I don't have a problem.
There, there's some, some meetings where, some Thursdays where you'll happen to show up and I send, I get three or four out in that day, so that's, that's fine too. It's just. the, the, the one with Andrew, when I sent out his stuff, that was expen- that was expensive. That was, that was a, a particularly expensive one, but, it's, we have options. I mean, and, you know, it's, it's, but if we're going to go electronic style, there's a diff- I do them differently than I do them now and, and, but, it's fine. Like it's, 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 it's wor- it's working, it's working well now.
Good Lord, I'll have to, for you, so you can come down and, and transcribe.
No problem. We'll, we'll keep it up. We'll keep it on paper for you, Sharon. It's okay. I don't mind.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We got a good deal on paper we just bought. So we're, okay. Alright, that's everything I have.
You have to respect your elders.
I, I do very much.
Seniors. You be quiet.
Maybe you could do that onerous, additions to the minutes digitally and send it to everybody.
Yeah, well, it's got, it's got to go, it's got to go on, that, that's got to go on paper because you got to sign it. So, that one, that, that, that unfortunately can't, uh, can't change.
Uh, it doesn't take much.
No.
Maybe someday, Bill, before you retire, we might be able to step up the technology.
We'll see.
Don't rush.
We're approaching the, uh, we're approaching very rapidly the not brain-engaged hour.
Yeah.
You're alright.
Oh, God.
I did reach out to Peg TV for the pre-town meeting. There, there, they do have a few requests. Several towns are doing it that, that day. So we're, we're on the list. They're going to see if they can get us scheduled to get somebody there to record it for us. So.
And that day is?
Uh, January twenty-third.
And who goes first?
They do.
School goes at what time?
Six.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody know what time, if you don't want to be that the whole thing, what, how long they're going to take?
There, I don't think there are more than, an hour. Where, where ours is longer for sure, but.
So they're starting at six?
Yeah.
Okay.
So where are we all set?
Are we, does anybody have any questions for Bill or additions or anything? Anybody got anything else to add? Is there any other necessary? Any other new business? I mean, not necessary, but new business? Any old business to take up?
Move, we adjourn.
Most is made to adjourn.